To the right, twenty United States of America, into your republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Then would you call them all?
Jerry Von Korn.
Here.
Dennis Whipple.
Here.
Your head is here. Cindy Harder.
Here.
Les Green.
Here.
Ellen Dobrin.
Here.
Bruce Mose.
Here.
First of all, on behalf of the Board of Education, I want to thank you for your hard work, four days of work. And as you noted, there have been three board members participating, but other board members have come in and watched. And everybody has been just thrilled with the quality of the work that you've done. At times, we wondered, oh my goodness, what is going to happen here? But it's been so exciting. And I know that the entire board wants to thank you tremendously for the service and the hard work that you've done for the school district. Just let me say a couple words about the process that the Board intends to follow. Tonight is a listening session. We aren't going to make any decisions. We're not going to make any recommendations. We're not going to accept your recommendations. We're not acting tonight. It's our chance. We decided to have a special meeting so that we wouldn't have to call you back. We wanted to listen to your presentation. And the Board will, may have some questions of the presenters. It's a public hearing. But we're going to turn the, in a minute, I'm going to turn it over to John, and we'll run through the presentation. On our Wednesday meeting next week, we're going to have a workshop. One of the things the Board is going to be doing is asking the administration to provide us information. Maybe it would be helpful to think about the way we did the strategic plan. We had a large group, not as large as this, did the strategic plan. I see some people that were on that planning session. When they presented the strategic plan to us, we did some diligence in deciding whether to accept the strategic plan. And it felt like to the strategic planning group that we were redoing their work. But in fact, at the end of that, because we, as a Board, have some diligence to do, we might have some questions to ask about what's behind or what the costs are, what you've explored, or what our administration recommends. But at the end of the strategic plan, we adopted the strategic plan that was recommended to us word for word. So if it feels to you like we are, you know, what are they doing? Are they going to do something completely different? The odds are, because of your great work, that we're going to wind up landing exactly where you did. But the voters and the public expect to see us do some due diligence. So on Wednesday of next week, we're going to have a dialogue with the Board, questions and answers, and do we have all the information we need to do our job appropriately? But we're not going to take a vote that night either. We're gonna, we might, people might say, I have the following concerns in order to take a vote, or this is what I need to know in order to take a vote. If everything goes according to plan, if our questions get answered, if we feel like we're ready, if we understand what's going on, then we would put this on the December 18th agenda, which is our Thursday televised meeting. And again, this is subject to the will of the Board. I can't make this happen. But if the Board seems to be ready after the workshop, and if we get our questions answered, and we understand where we're going, then, then everything will have gone according to plan. And we will adopt some kind of resolution, probably incorporating your recommendation. But whatever that resolution is, it will be made public before it's presented to us for adoption. So that you'll see what the resolution is going to be if we do adopt it. We're likely to ask for a recommendation or any concerns from our administration, who will also be looking at your work product and making a recommendation. That's generally what I think is going to happen. With that, I'm going to ask John to take over and manage the rest of the presentation. Thanks again so much for the, for the work that you've all done. Oh, sorry?
Thank you very much. I'm going to, I think of it less as managing the presentation and more like turning it over to an amazing group who has participated in the Community Design Task Force. Before I do that, I would like to acknowledge my associates, Meg Parsons, Judy Hoskins. Is Judy still here? Judy, hi. David Leopold from IIW in St. Cloud, our associate here, Scott Krenner, who did an amazing job today of putting together some great design work. So what you're going to see is the results of four days of intense work, very holistic view of a high school solution for St. Cloud. This was our purpose, to co-create a clear and compelling vision of the future for St. Cloud area high school learners and to align educational programs and physical design and facilities with this vision. This is what you're going to see. I'm going to turn it over to, I will facilitate this presentation. I'm going to have our co-presenters self-introduce. So I'm going to turn it over to you.
My name is Allison Tadic. I am a parent, a community member, and also a staff member in District 742. I was brought here with the highest hopes to find out how we can make an equitable leap into the 21st century for learning and into the future beyond that.
I'm Whitney Holm. I'm a student at Tech High School, and I'm also now a sister of two siblings at South and Oak Hill. I came here hoping to create a better school for the future generations that are going to go through our school system, to prosper in their futures and any endeavors they might undertake.
I'm Siddhartha Pari, or Sid. I'm a senior at Tech, and I was invited here by my principal to pretty much give my input as a student and give the student perspective. My highest hope here was to create a school that will help the students of tomorrow in whatever they might go for, and also provide some sort of community token or something that everyone in our community can look up to and kind of facilitate whatever they want to do.
I'm Scott Andreas. I'm a community member. My purpose here was to make sure that there was equity between both schools, that there was fairness.
My name is Jennifer Noble, and I'm a parent of four children in District 742, business owner and community member. And my highest hopes coming into this process was for all of us to keep an open mind because it is about the future of our children and they are the future of our community.
My name is Elizabeth Nielsen. I am a teacher here at Apollo High School. I've been here three years. I came here, the reason I came here was because I've been here three years and I want to be here 73 years. I love District 742. I'm very invested in it. And because I wanted to make sure that our facilities are the best that they can be for our children and the learning that they need to, that they need to take part in, not just 10 years down the road, but a long time down the road.
My name is Glenn Farb. I'm a community member, business owner, independent architect, and a parent of a Tech graduate. And my, my hope was to be part of the process to cultivate a vision of what the education system could be like 25, 30 years down the road.
My name is Heidi Everett. I'm the mother of four children, ranging in age from 21 to five. My five-year-old is the reason that I'm here. He's a very energetic little boy who's curious and distracted by shiny things and doesn't do well in a traditional classroom. And so my hope was that we would create an engaging, inspiring learning environment where children of all ages and learning styles can thrive.
Hello, my name is Ted Schmidt. I've been a lifetime resident of St. Cloud. I'm a business owner. And my main purpose here was to make sure that the vision of having the best possible schools for our community don't get compromised and that we're not afraid to take those challenges.
So we're going to do, we're going to start with a little review of some of the, some of the process, the workshop process that we have been going through. One of the first exercises we did was highest hopes.
Which you've just touched on.
So when we initially came together as a group, what we decided to undertake first of all was why are we here? And you heard, like, like John just said, from us, you heard why we were here. But what we did was we took everyone's responses, why are we here, what are we looking for, what's our objective, and put them into this Wordle. And as you can see, some of the big things that our group was concerned with were things like community and the community of St. Cloud, with sustainability, making sure that these schools would serve us well in the future and that they would be long-lasting and we would be able to sustain them with our resources. That they would be inclusive is another big word that you see up there. And so, meeting the needs of all of our learners, are very diverse learners, and making sure that we are serving each student well and not only one type of student. You see things like environment, like visionary. Clearly, this is for our kids and our future, which you see if they're on the radar, students, kids, kind of the same thing. And so we're very focused on making sure that this is a good environment and two fantastic schools to serve our students because they are our future. Just a few other things that I want to highlight, the word asset down there. We want to make sure that these are community assets, so links to the greater community. When we think of our athletics, our arts programs, and some of those things that we like to make connections with communities, and also that they can use, the community can use the schools as a resource as well. You see things like open-minded, which is something that we discussed quite a bit, that there are some things we need to, that we need to envision, some things that we need to keep, some things that we need to let go of, which is another portion of the presentation. But to keep an open mind about what these two schools might look like in the future, because we have almost endless possibilities to work with. So that was our, our highest hopes.
Another thing that was very important for our group was to tie it in with the strategic plan. The strategic plan was done this past year with the district and the Board of Education and an outside facilitator. And from that strategic plan, we have our mission, is to create a safe and caring climate and culture in which we prepare, engage, educate, empower, and inspire learners in partnership with their surrounding community to be successful in today's and tomorrow's society. We also wanted our process and the outcome to adhere to the core values. You see highlighted equitable access, differing perspectives that were brought together, common goals, preparing our children for a global society. And this is done by shared ownership by the individual families, schools, and our communities.
Some of the design parameters that we have set forth is to align the district with a strategic plan. This is important for transformation and focused on the future, 21st century learning, focused on a student's success, technology-rich, equitable access to programs, full high school activity and athletic experience. This is about two equitable high schools. The plans for a design capacity of up to 1,800 students for each high school. The estimated square foot per student was equated at about 200 square feet per person, which equals a footprint of about 360,000 square feet each. And then there would be no loss of instructional time.
Just some of our working ground rules. We'll go over that later. Forces of change.
We took time to identify forces of change that are going to be influencing our schools within the next 10 years or so, and just coming up. So some of them were funding, changing technology, different types of learning systems, work-based learning, the aging population, the catching up to the students and their skills with technology compared to the older generation's skills with technology.
Another of our exercises are preconceptions and limiting beliefs, and trying to identify were these personal or institutional beliefs that might prevent or limit us in basic challenges presented by these forces. Rather than reading through all of this, this is my part that I felt pretty passionate about is, in the St. Cloud community, I've been hearing about the new school. We can't do it. We won't do it. No one can agree. It's not fair. It's tiresome. So when we brought this slide up, and I relate to this very well, again, the resistance to money, we can't afford it. So then let's just stop it. And that's where we've been dragging along this whole time. The reality is, with schools and technology and new shiny, there is a keeping up with Joneses issue here where people in the community are moving on hard because they feel that we don't have some facilities that others, other similar communities offer. So that is important. The other part I thought was important is that there was equity here. So it's not, the conversation was, is there a new high school? Well, no. What it is, is we need to have new high schools. And part of Apollo would be that it was going to get equal treatment. So I thought that was another limiting belief that's of the community that needs to be straightened out and clarified.
We did things and had presentations around 21st century skills, educational trends. We watched videos. Many have been posted. Then we did an exercise called I See, We See, which leads to creating a shared vision.
And so the next part where we pretty much had, we let everyone here pretty much think what they would see in an idealistic school. And they would consider the problems that we see in the forces of change. And so some things that did overlap. And so we had kind of a task force put together, this statement here, which is really what we want to see in this new school. So we see an inviting student center design that integrates environmental, community, and technological resources to cultivate the love of learning in all students. By celebrating beauty, function, and sustainability, we build on a tradition of excellence that serves as a source of pride for all, for students, staff, and the community. And so the bullet points below are pretty much the overlapping topics that all of, that we saw between all the people here. And so we want schools to foster global preparedness, holistic development, and engagement through multiple modes of learning, such as what we were seeing here, different kinds of learning, such as learning, visual learning, group learning, so just different aspects of that. Students and staff strive for success within equitable, inclusive, and collaborative settings. Once again, that overlaps with that first bullet point. And students engage in theoretical and applied learning settings that build bridges between subjects, classrooms, student groups, and.
We heard presentations from the district's leadership team on teaching and learning, what do we want for our learners, and, and those trends. We're going to move through those quickly. We looked at utilization of scheduled space of the existing buildings. We looked at the sites in terms of, so we understood where are the specific sites. This is Tech. The obvious thing about Tech is that it is part of a broader community. When you look close at Tech, it means connection to Lake George and the library and the playfields. So we looked in depth. This is the current parking. We had fun looking at the parking diagram, the student parking diagram for Tech. So a lot of analysis and looking at what is, and which led us to an exercise called Empathy Walks of Apollo and Tech, in alignment with the vision.
So yeah, we shared our high hopes, laid our preconceived notions on the table. And then we were let loose in both Apollo and Tech with this stack of Post-it notes and Sharpie pens. And our task was to identify things that we visually saw or felt that were worth keeping and should be thought about changing. And then we came back and we said, okay, what aligns? The green is align. What aligned with our visions and our high hopes for what we were looking for in a quality equitable education? And what was misaligned that needed to be changed? And then from there, we did a silent exercise, which was hard for some of us, where we grouped them together looking for commonalities and, and common themes, which will be something that will come up later through the presentation as well. As we always started big and broad so that every voice was heard and then searched for these commonalities so that we could hone the proposal that we're giving you, the recommendation tonight. So after the sorting and organizing, what we came up with were lists of what our priorities would be based on silent placement of dots. And so you can see some of these things here. You know, accessibility is an issue at Tech. There's culture and pride. Pride was evident in both Tech and Apollo. And all roots came back with huge accolades for that, that there's just such a wonderful community connection and pride for the school. So for Tech High School, can I walk up here? I'm feeling kind of weird staring at this. So we tried to break down and look for things that had the biggest bullets, or the biggest number of dots on them. And then there were some outliers out here with four and one. And so we tried to focus on the ones that were most important. The connection and heritage of Tech High School to the downtown community was huge, as well as, I think several people here said it, they bleed orange. I'm not from the area, and I was completely overwhelmed and inspired by the amount of passion and enthusiasm by the faculty and the alums and the students from both Tech and Apollo. And we felt that regardless of what we did with either location, that sense of community and pride and ownership needs to be maintained. And then obviously, the misalignment was that it was landlocked for Tech, an outdated building. The building was a blessing and a curse. It has a beautiful historical facade, but interiured, interesting. Accessibility issues. It's kind of an interesting maze. Actually, when I left the building, I had to find someone to escort me out because I got lost. It was interesting. So those were some of the things that we felt were misaligned about Tech. So for Apollo, you know, great outdoor spaces. We loved the artwork. As you walked down the hallways here, you can see, you know, the murals that the students paint every year along the hallway. There's just this wonderful sense of ownership. But it's, it's dark. There are these long, never-ending hallways, not necessarily warm and inviting. So we wanted to open it up and get some more brightness in there, some flexibility with the classrooms, some flow and aesthetics. So you have these beautiful murals and artwork, and then all of a sudden, you've just got like this bricks and mortar and kind of this cold place. And so we wanted to make sure that we kept what was amazing and then added some additions that allowed for more light, easier traffic, traffic flow, logical spaces for lockers, classrooms, things like that.
We did a comparison of high schools in the area, immediate area of near, you know, of recent vintage. So we understood our numbers, how many, how much area they took, design capacities, et cetera. So that was information for the groups. And then we did some tours. A couple people are going to speak today.
I like to travel. I like to go places, do things. And this looked like the opportunity to do it. The tour of Alexandria High School involved a new building that these folks had designed. And it's beautiful. It's so flexible. The building is out away from the town with the anticipation that the town's going to build out to it. The building had quite an emphasis on the trades and vocational facilities in that area, even though they do have a great technical college. The community really got involved in the building at Alexandria. In fact, both the industry donated over $10 million worth of equipment for their technology and trade area. Things like milling machines, 3D printers. And the business community has actually not only donated the equipment, they're offering support for the equipment. If something breaks down, they just call the local business people and donate it. And they send their representatives out to get things going again. It's a beautiful building, light, airy, great technology within the building. Teachers were showing some of that off to us. I can't understand it, but it was fun. The trip down to Hopkins, this was a case of showing the remodeling of a current school. In fact, this school has been remodeled three times over the past 18 years. And in each case, they've had to go through the voters and get a referendum approval. They've done a beautiful job. They've also worked with the city there on their huge gymnasium. Probably it could hold up to five basketball courts. And so they're sharing again with the community and specifically with the city government there.
Any other comments for tours?
The one thing I noticed, if you go back to the Alexandria slide, when you, when you enter the building, you're in this large, three-story atrium space that has connection to the immediate center on the second floor to the, to the left. And some of the, they work their education program in three academies that a student, or they arrive as a freshman, can identify with an academy. And they are counseled to take classes that will enable them to continue in that line of educational thought and vocational learning. Enables the students to be much, much more ready for technical colleges or universities.
Let's see. Reflection, comment. Do we want to introduce the design criteria? Or, I think that's later? Yeah. We did, well, I think we have to get to the design exercise. Yeah. So there was a design exercise called, we call it Think Outside the Blocks. And so before we do that exercise, we try to establish design criteria from which the design work will be judged. So maybe quickly go over this now, or do we want to do that later? You're prepared right now?
We talked about design criteria, what we wanted to see in our high schools. We decided that flexibility and adaptability was needed because things advance. So quickly, an educational theory changes. We, we can't know what's coming 30 years down the road. So we have to make sure that our spaces are flexible. We need to have a variety of learning settings. So not only just traditional box classrooms, but also a variety of settings for small group, for large group, for other learning activities that might need to happen. Accessible and welcoming to all. So we talked about the importance of having a very identifiable front entrance and a place that felt welcoming to community members and to students and to faculty and to everyone when they entered the building. Safety and security were another paramount issue to us. We wanted to make sure that our students were safe, were secure. When we visited Hopkins, we were very impressed by their entrance. It was very, very controlled. You came in one entrance. You had to have approval to go through a door to enter the building then. It was very secure. Outside learning and amenities, something that was discussed, things like being able to take biology classes outside, to use the environment that we have around us as a learning space. So thinking outside of our walls. How can we utilize the land that we are on? Activities and athletics, do we have enough facilities? Do we have facilities that are able to be used? And are they, are they good facilities? Sites, circulation, service, and parking. So things like the bus chute. Do we have enough parking for people? Where to parents' center, the building, that sort of thing. Infrastructure, we talked about. If we're talking about a new site, what sorts of infrastructure concerns?
concerns do we have? Community access and access to the community. So again, when we did that exercise, it was a very important link that was highlighted that we needed to have that community access. Sustainable for the future, so again, resources that the community is going to have to put into this to sustain this. We talked about natural light was a big thing that we wanted to have. Cost, of course, and constructibility and phasing. So we were very concerned about no loss of instructional time for our students. So what does the phasing look like? Is it, can it be constructed and can it be done?
Now, at this point, it really was amazing what you were able to create last night. And this, everything you're going to see now was created from the time of about 6:00 last night to tonight. And so the teams have been working very hard. So any thoughts you have about the Think Outside the Block exercises?
I wasn't quite sure what the think about was when we started the, we got the little foam blocks put on our desk, and I went, wow, this will be interesting. But in an hour, it was pretty impressive how much consensus we were able to get, what was important, what were we expecting in a new state-of-the-art ideal school? With all these, it's going to be almost impossible to interpret this with these slides, but the point of the matter is, is that there is a common area where there should be community spaces separated by some areas that are structured learning areas. And everyone had a little bit different concept of how to accomplish that. The next, if you went to the slide before, no, next one, back please. This was the part that I thought was very interesting, and personalities of different people showed through. There is a gentleman that was quite proud of this one here because it had the baseball diamonds front and center. We had other ones where football stadiums were front and center, so we kind of understood what was important to them. The interesting part between, I'll back up a little bit. This is a 33rd Street site. I'm not sure if you're familiar with this on the south side of St. Cloud. Oak Hill School is just north of this, about one mile. And it was able, with all the different requirements for an 1,800-student school, it had all the outside facilities, it integrated outside learning with the inside learning, and that worked out well on a site. And the two came out relatively similar. Then the site that's farther out, that's about three miles south of Oak Hill School, is the proposed St. Augusta site. And this is 115 that ends up over in St. Augusta. This road continues on and goes up to Luxembourg. Again, that site worked out with the layouts, and I think as groups, when we just looked at the quality of the layouts, we left last night thinking they were similar sites. And that's where we left it.
I just wanted to throw something in here. So I was on, oh, hello. I was on one of four teams that was given the to-scale footprints of the buildings, the blocks, as well as the athletic fields for the existing Tech site. And so we went through this exercise for the new sites, the existing Apollo site, as well as the existing Tech site. And so, as Ted said, some of the things that were amazing was, you know, we were kind of given free rein to say, here's all your space, here's all your compartments, what would the ideal look like to you? And I believe John is going to go over, one of you is going to go over, the commonalities that came through. So even if we had different site layout or different building design, there were commonalities that came through with every piece. And we tried to capture what we had showed before about what do we keep, what do we change, and where do we get the most impact? And that's what John's going to go over now.
And just a bit.
In doing the exercise, you'll see that many of us kept inside the blocks. Some of us went a little outside the blocks to give, to show, if we want to do this and we want to do this right with the constraints we were given from the design team to include all of the facilities that we wanted, some things would have to happen.
Which team were you on?
The Tech remodel. And you can see, everyone did a diligent job of trying to minimize the disruption to the area. We all want to preserve the Lake George area. In order to do what we want to do, in order to provide for our students with all the activities and athletics and parking, would be the lower left corner that shows a lot of displacement of homes and a lot of disruption to the core Lake George neighborhood that the city has done so well to build up and rejuvenate.
So very quickly, we, and this is something that we offer to the groups, after they are complete with the Block, the Think Outside the Block exercises, our team goes back and does a synthesis and a common ground. And we're always amazed at how much common ground there is in a community. And this is the common ground for the four teams that were designing a new Tech on a new site. So a great deal of common ground there. And I'm not going to read it for you, but I would like you to be aware that there's a great deal of common ground in that solution. Same thing with Apollo. That's quite a few bullet points that all of the design teams pretty much had included as, and for us, that's a place to start. That's a sign that this is what the community is interested in. And so we begin our work from that place of a really solid base. And so I'm just going to take you through these. And again, and I think it's worth mentioning that the common ground at Tech, and this, the intent was to design, to redesign or transform Tech where it is. And the teams really took that assignment seriously. And this is what, this is the common ground for that. All groups relocated media services to use that property. They incorporated a major new addition for flexible learning. They maintained the Lake George property as an asset. As much as I tried to show them that a new high school could be on that site, they would not allow that. All groups demolished the 1965 wing to the west. All groups built over 13th Avenue, the current bus area. All groups adopted a reconfigured Clark Field, parking to the north and west. Three groups kept the existing oldest building, pool and gym. And please be aware that that building is of historic value. And we had actually lots of great ideas about how that can be repurposed. Maybe some of you can talk about that in the table talk at the end. And all, three groups acquired properties along 14th Avenue. And I'm going to skip this and go to synthesis. And at this point, I'm going to keep talking, and then I'll turn it over to the teams. At this point, we, not long ago, offered a synthesis of those four options for each of our three projects, right? And we started with, because the community group needs to understand and wants to understand how, what value the cost impact of these proposed projects. So we offered, what we offered is the new site, a new building on, this is the 33rd, my brain's kind of tired, but the 33rd Street property. And we're recommending it because of this great relationship with the city and the community. That's really important for, the community connection is really important for Tech. And we believe this is the right site for if you go new and if you go to a new site. And that was really our rationale. Now, in terms of costs, we, we'll go to that at the end. Then Scott and I think we'll go, we'll skip now. We're going to trade over to a couple of, we're just going to share two more designs with you. And what we explained to the groups is that, for the purposes of this exercise, a new building on a new site, we were assuming the cost parameters around Alexandria, and we'll share that with a bit. But we thought the site work, the projects, the table work resolving the site, and then the individual diagrams were great. And we felt the need to look more closely at Apollo and very closely at Tech to give it due diligence. And so this is our, and Scott, why don't you just click through these quickly? We did a design scenario at Apollo, and you can just click through. So we did a synthesis of what we saw in the block models and recommended some site reconfigurations, additional spaces for gyms and performing arts space, and food service, and more daylight, reorganizing learning communities, relocating commons, this is a new bus loop in the back, fixing security issues, taking a pass around the building, and additions and remodeling to create a 21st century learning environment. The next project we're going to show is our recommendation for the existing Tech. And we worked well into the evening and then all day-to-day. And this is, this comes with a phasing plan because the challenge here is how do you phase construction so that you can stay, so that we don't lose any instructional time? So Phase One would involve the construction of a new, three-story, 21st century learning communities to the north. North is up on this, Lake George is the circular water to the right. And a new commons that would create a new entrance to, basically, essentially a new Tech on the existing site. One of the main challenges of the building is that there's really no entry or no way to enter the building. So Step Two, or Phase Two, would be the removal of the 1960s building, which all four of our design teams did, to create additional parking. Then we're creating in addition to where the bus loop is now, for food service and CTE programs and loading and service. And at this point, we're keeping the historic portion in the white you see there in the gyms and the pool. And then Phase Three, this is the Phase Three, where the existing kind of front space is transformed into fine arts, fitness, and now you have almost a completely reborn or recast Tech. We shared models from around the country of similar projects in communities that had land on, projects. This does, maybe spin around and take a look at it. We looked at an option that created, this took 27 properties to create or combine a more, a larger piece of land that handles the parking. It still doesn't really handle any of the field space issue. That was a big issue. We did look at a stacked parking arrangement and a skyway over to the library, and that turned out to be actually more expensive to do than to acquire 27 properties. We can share those numbers too. Scene five and six, and then I think, and so, just back, back one more side. This is interesting because the red portion is the historic high school, and that's, I think, the elevations that are cherished by the community. And I'm just going to go, oh, this is interesting. No, I'm going to go this way. Going old school. The original building, 1917, here, and this is 38. So the historic part is really two components. But the historic facade is really kind of 12 inches deep because once you go inside Tech, it feels kind of like a 1960s building. I don't know if you've noticed that. But there's not much history once you go in, which is kind of an oddity. So that's our solution for Tech. And so we offered these, and they all came with a price. So let's go back to that very quickly, and we're about to wrap up the presentation. One more minute. So we have been working diligently with the square footages and the costs to do these things. What would this cost? And for Alexandria, or for the new Tech on a new site, we used Alexandria's cost model, which is, this is the Alexandria precedent. So this is the actual cost of Alexandria in terms of the square feet and the cost per square feet and the soft costs. So there's a total of $73 million now. To take it into today's dollars or a projected cost, you have to inflate the cost per square feet because it's four years later and you've gone through an inflation period for construction. We worked with Cross Anderson, the construction manager for this project that we worked with, to assemble these numbers for the use of this meeting. And they're aware that we're going to share these. So this is kind of our mutual projection of the construction cost. Now, this is quite a bit larger because it's 1,800 students versus 14. So site development costs and the soft costs, so you see it there. There's also some additional costs for property acquisition and estimates around utilities that Alex didn't have, but the site development was, actually, the program was about the same. Apollo High School, again, just taking square footage numbers, applying current construction values. You get additions and renovations for the numbers you see there, adding soft costs, and roughly the number there. And then Tech High School renovated, an assessment of what is, this is the actual square footage in the model, and the existing square footage to remain, heavy remodel, light remodel, a construction subtotal. The projected cost to acquire properties and demolish things and utility relocations and the parking space cost and Clark Field improvements. And we had yet to figure out relocated media services. So a total project cost of a transformed Tech High School on the existing site is that number. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to our team. We asked them to do table work and to use the criteria to sort through. We had rigorous criteria in scoring, and we're going to turn it over to the team to reflect on their experience.
So this is just kind of a, I'm just going to give you the numbers of what we came up with. This is going off of that assessment criteria that we saw earlier that I spoke about. These are the things that we wanted to see. And we took a look at these and we said, okay, does this meet what we're looking for? And we rated these one through five. For the purposes of this discussion, we decided to take Apollo off the table. We felt that what was presented met the needs of Apollo and that the small stuff, where we're going to put the gym, where we're going to put the pool, that sort of thing, could be looked at a bit later. But the big picture right now was deciding what we needed to do with Tech. Do we build a new one or do we renovate on the existing site? That was our task. So we took all of these criteria that we went over earlier, and we rated one through five on all of these criteria in tables, is what we did. And here are the numbers that we came up with. The overall rating for a remodeled Tech was a 343.6 was the, that was the total. And the overall points that a new Tech received was 455.5. So the, and if I can say this, I feel this is a big responsibility to say this, but the recommendation of our task force is that we do proceed with construction of a new Tech High School. On a new site, yes. Yes, 33rd, on the 33rd site. Thank you.
Any other comments? So with that, we're So with that, we're going to turn it back to you. I'm sure you have questions.
So the main reason we're having questions at this point is because these folks are here, and I think that we want to use that time to the maximum extent possible, asking questions of the people that are here this time. The architects will be back at the next meeting. You can send questions in to be answered next time, but we'd really like to focus to the maximum extent possible of questions for the folks that presented. Yes, Les?
I have lived here for 40 some years, and I want you to just listen to me. I'm not faulting people, I just want you to listen to what I'm saying and try to process it. In 1917, we built the first high school, 0% of population were people of color. In 1938, when they added the other part, 0% of people of color. In 1970, when this high school was built, less than 1% of the people were people of color. Today, 40% of the students are students of color. They're not here, and we should find some way to have that population represented because part of the alignment with the strategic plan is that they will feel a sense of belonging, a sense of welcome and comfort when they come into the building. I understand, as Woody Allen said, half the life is showing up, but there's a reason why we don't sometimes, is that we don't feel comfortable. And I've heard these arguments, I feel comfortable wherever I am, and I can shut them down or emphasize them, but the point is some people don't feel comfortable, don't feel to be listened to, and we have to find some way to encourage, force, whatever the point is, to have them at your table so you hear what they're saying and understand. So that's a concern I have. Okay, thanks.
I'd like to ask my first question. I have two questions, but my first question is this, and it's probably one that I could ask of myself and then I could ask of everybody in this room, but the process is to ask the question here and see if you can give me some feedback on that. And I'm not sure there's a right, there's not a right answer to it, but there's answers to it. The question is this: Why do we believe that all of our children, District 742, all of our children are going to be better off by this recommendation than who brought us? Why do we believe that?
Speaking for myself, I believe all of our children will be better served because of the improvements we're making. We are making, we've recommended, we've talked for 16 hours on how it can be equitable for every student that ever comes to high school in District 742. And we've gone over and over again to make sure that it's not just a new building. What we do for one, we do for both. We lighten it up, we expand on education if we can. We didn't go down that route. But for me personally, creating an atmosphere that engages the students to learn is what we need to do. And utilizing the tools that we have had for so long at both Tech and Apollo isn't cutting it anymore. We have to embrace the fact that it's time for change. Change is scary, but we have to embrace new technologies along with existing technologies and get our kids ready to get jobs and go to college and be successful.
On the tour to Alexandria, we took around, probably 10, 10 or so students from the grades nine to 10. And I was in the group with them. And as we toured Alexandria, just almost sort of all look on their face the entire time we went through it, kind of, it showed me that we need to provide our students with as many opportunities and experiences as possible so they know what's outside of our community, so they can go and broaden their horizons and not just be limited to the tools that we have.
Education is constantly being revolutionized. The most recent revolution for education would be integrating technology into how classrooms work. And so recently, all the students at South just received their, I believe, iPads. And if the middle school students are receiving those as a personal device for them to use, then how come our high schools, which are supposed to be the foundation step into for our students to go into the real world, how come they aren't able to provide this for them? And so we just want to have a new building or some kind of new facility that would give this to our students.
I believe a huge key was the design criteria that we evaluated tonight and that we numerically weighted and then made a recommendation from because that criteria looked at the top priorities for all students. And then by all of the groups coming to a recommendation from that, that weighting that we did gave us data in order to ensure that we were recommending this, and it was the best for all students based on that criteria, and the criteria was the priority.
I think I would say that there, I don't know that it's the best for every single student, and I don't know if we can ever reach something that's the best for every single student, but I believe that it is going to be beneficial to every single student. I heard so many wonderful points that I had never considered before, and I think that's why this process that we went through is a great thing because we heard all sorts of diverse viewpoints. And, you know, as a white, middle-class teacher, I don't know some of the things that the other people in the group were talking about. And so I understood now different perspectives, or I heard different perspectives. And so we heard from people who said that their children couldn't participate in after-school activities at a new Tech because the transportation would be an issue, and that was something that I had to consider before. And so I think that there are these considerations that we need to think about because, yes, even with this new, this new building, which provides all of these wonderful things, there are things that we need to take into account, but I think that the benefits far outweigh the cons. The pros far outweigh the cons, and things like transportation are things that we can fix within, you know, within our own, within our own system. But we need these facilities because Tech has served us well for hundreds of years, for hundreds of years, but has served us well for decades. I'm sorry, almost 100 years. I'm getting tired too. But it's served us well in this district for decades, but will, with sustainability, will it serve us well for the next 100? And that's what I'm worried about, is this school going to carry us into an era of technology that's even scared me at 28 years old? We need, we need a new facility that is going to provide for our students the opportunities and the technology and the resources that they need to succeed in the next century.
As an architect in the community, I have always admired the exterior of the side of Tech, but I've never been in the classrooms. I've always been in the gymnasium because I was watching my son play basketball. And when we toured Tech High School in the learning areas and in the classrooms, I asked myself, how did Matthew learn in this environment? And he turned out all right. He went to college and he graduated, but I think it was, I would like to have given him a much more flexible, much more creative and inspiring environment for him to learn than in an old building with narrow hallways. I would, I want to keep the exterior facade, but I think repurposing it for another use is much more in line with what we need to do.
My perspective, so my older kids went to Albany and Sartell, and for the last five years, while we've been prepping for my little guy to go to kindergarten, we've been looking at moving out of the St. Cloud area because we didn't want our son to go to St. Cloud. Right or wrong, the perceptions were that the facilities were outdated, that the technology was outdated, that the investment in the schools was below what other places were. And we looked around and, you know, we just, we love where we live, and we thought, well, let's get involved in the process rather than moving because that doesn't solve the problem. And Jesus Sandwell, who's one of our wonderful math and science instructors out at Kennedy, said when we had our high hopes discussion the first night here, we want this to be a school district that people want to move into versus a school district that people want to move out of. And so it, it doesn't necessarily answer your question about how does this make it better for all students, but what I think it has done, or at least what I've seen in the four times we've been here, is that it's really allowed all of us to reimagine and rethink what could be. Doesn't mean that all new and shiny is best. We've had lots of conversations about, you know, technology versus tactile learning versus good old reading books in a quiet space. But it's allowed us to reimagine and rethink the possibilities of what could be.
The idea of creating a school that's going to be the best possible option for every single student, I think is an honorable goal. I don't know if that's going to be achieved here. I go back to the list of criteria of what makes for a great school, and the idea of doing a substantial remodel to Apollo offers enough different options by doing that for a new Tech High School gives a better chance to be able to serve more students with a greater variety of learning challenges or qualities than under a current status quo. If you do tour our facilities, they're depressing, and that's not fostering a better learning environment. We need to do a change.
Thank you. Any other questions?
One of the things I noticed is that as we're building the two different models of the schools, one was, one for Apollo and one for a new Tech or a remodeled Tech, is that, and it's, it's an issue that I, you know, I would be as concerned with, that there's a lot of parity between the two schools, where if you're going to offer it at Apollo, you're going to offer it at Tech. But I'm wondering if there isn't also an opportunity to, I mean, I feel kind of like what we did is we created McDonald's. The outside of the building is a little bit different, but when you go inside, they're all the same and they operate the same, so we've got two schools doing exactly the same thing. I'm wondering if the group gave any thought and consideration to differentiating the two schools to where one may be putting a real strong emphasis on arts and, you know, band and orchestra and theater and art, and the other school may be a real strong emphasis on career and tech. And I think both of them would have to be really strong in, you know, science and math and English. But just kind of differentiating the schools and going more to somewhat of an open enrollment type model where it wouldn't just be because you live over here, you go to Tech, but it's because, hey, I'm really, really interested in arts and music, I'm going to go to Apollo. Or I want to be a diesel mechanic when I graduate, I want to go to Tech.
We actually did discuss this, some of us that went to Alexandria, and we discussed it with the students that were with us, and we posed that question to them. What if, as a district, we still had two locations but were one high school, a north campus and a south campus? We offered different learning academies at either campus, you know? Then the question comes into, how do you, how do you work out sports teams? You know, I'm a diehard Tiger, but health and sciences are offered only at Apollo. Therefore, do I have to then become an Eagle for sports, or can I still go to Tech and play sports there? And then you weigh the issue of, are you waiting one sports team over the other? The discussion has come up, and I believe all of us at one point have talked about that when we talked about equity. We want to make sure that we offer everything that we can to all students. And if you look logistically at where Apollo is and where that 33rd Street site is, any classes that are held here, Project Leadway, First Responder, that's held here, kids can get on a bus or in a van and be brought here within four minutes. It's not across town through stoplights anymore. It's very convenient to come right up 15, take the class, or vice versa. Then you're not having to bus kids from the south side to the north side to, because they want to be in the auto, you know, I want to learn all about auto and welding and all that, and that's only off the Apollo. But we did discuss the opportunities to have the tech college or businesses come in and establish this as a technical school because they've already made improvements of that, and to establish the other school as a fine arts type of school. We did talk about it, but overall, we kind of, kind of came to the consensus that you could do that outside of what you have to do with the buildings. We were talking about facilities mostly, not the educational programs. That's, they can go hand in hand, but they really are separate. But if you locate schools conveniently to each other, you have far more opportunities to let kids go back and forth to do different classes.
I also talked about this in various groups and also with various people, and we talked about kind of the same idea, that one would almost be a technology magnet school and one would be an arts magnet school. And so the debate was kind of the value in having those magnet schools versus community schools. I think that in the four times that we had together to talk, that this wasn't at the top of our list of things to consider. We were more talking about the building versus the educational programs. But I think it's, it may be a good conversation to have in the future. Some of the things that we talked about were, if we did have those two magnet schools, the pros to this would be that we could build one heck of a culinary arts facility and some amazing tech ed facilities, and we could put the money into having state-of-the-art, absolute state-of-the-art facilities instead of building two that might be very good but not necessarily state-of-the-art. On the other hand, we talked about the cons being the transportation costs and things like that that we would have to work out. What if one school gets overwhelmed with kids who really want to take part in the STEAM activities, or actually it would be a STEM activities over at Tech, and we don't have enough arts kits for Apollo? And how would that work out? And the waiting lists and that sort of thing. So I think it's a, a big conversation, one that we didn't really get to explore too much in depth, but I think it might be a good thing to talk about further and think about.
Yeah, I think there's a lot of people who are interested in having conversations about just those sorts of things right now, so.
Anyone else? It looks like we are done. Thank you so much, folks. I would encourage you to, we were done because I didn't know that someone had another question.
Thank you, Jerry.
This is a unique opportunity. We've worked for 16 hours all of you, and this is for 100 years. Five generations of students, what's our hurry? This is inconvenient for us, but we should just stay here and continue the dialogue. My question is this: Are there, we've talked about economic costs, dollars, about building these things, just because we have the chance to ask this question right now, are there any social costs to relocating Tech from its current site to a new site beyond money? Are there any other kinds of social civic, of other kinds of things that are important for us to hear from you?
A large discussion due to the interest of the Lake George neighborhood to maintain the school at that site. We've talked about it, and Tech is more than just the Lake George neighborhood. Tech is Clearwater, St. Augusta, you know, Tech is Clearwater, St. Augusta, you know, all the way out towards Kimball. It's more than just one core neighborhood. We do not want to take away or diminish the feelings of the people that live in that core neighborhood right next to Tech. But we have to look at everyone else too. Yes, you would take out the school, put it in a new place so people would have to drive there. It takes me to get from the north side of St. Cloud where I live to Tech High School where I work, eight minutes. To go from my house to the new site would take me six minutes. There, that's not that far. Yes, I have a car. Buses would go there, city buses would go there. I don't know that you would get any more or less parental involvement at a site out of town than you do in town. One thing I did notice today when I came to Apollo, the commons was full. I came after the buses were already loaded because that is crazy time. Nobody wants to be around. But I came in and it was still full. Because Apollo is more of a campus than Tech. At Tech, when I leave at four o'clock, when my shift is over, the kids are gone. No one's there. To bring them out where all the activities are all located in one place, you would build that campus community. But yes, there would be an impact to that core neighborhood. But there would also be the advantage of being able to improve on that core neighborhood and enriching what the city has started there with the Lake George neighborhood.
I'm going to try to synthesize some of the things that I heard tonight from other people. Things that I heard about taking Tech out, how it would negatively impact the area. Students who patronize small businesses in the downtown area would no longer be within walking distance. There is the mention of students who attend post-secondary at St. Cloud State and are able to do so because it is walking distance. I'm not sure about the statistics on that and how many students at Tech take advantage of that opportunity, however. So I don't have any data or factual information. Another thing that I heard was the ability for Tech students to go out into the community. One anecdote we heard tonight was from a woman who lives in the area. And she told a story about how the kids who participate in the drama program knocked on her door and gave her a ticket. And said, here's a dollar off if you come see Oklahoma, which was a nice thing that would be removed if they were out. They couldn't go do that walking right outside of their school anymore. Let me see, some other things that I heard tonight. Of course, the tradition was talked about hugely. We also talked about repurposing, so there's kind of a dual nature there. We wouldn't necessarily have to remove Clark Field. We wouldn't necessarily have to remove Tech. But we could repurpose those old historic buildings that the community places such value on. On the other side of things, some things that I heard, when we looked at the plan for 33rd, that site, what was wonderful to me to see, and since it was so important to this group to maintain a community link, was that there was that proposed park that's going to go in. And so now Tech has Lake George, and in the future, they have a new park. And they have one that they can use jointly with the city with all of those fields, which kind of fits our flexibility model that we need to have room to expand and that we could use those fields, we could have that joint agreement. We had, I heard about somebody whose parents cannot come to their grandson's games because the parking is not suitable for individuals with disabilities and so they can't get around. And so almost alienating certain members of the community in a way. The idea also that we would need to acquire properties and destroy homes in the very community that we are trying to link to seemed to me to be the antithesis of what we're trying to accomplish. We want to bring in community, yet we are going to destroy 27 homes. And that, they are going to be very, very upset about that. So there are pros and cons. But again, I think as a team, we felt that the pros did outweigh the cons and that we would still be able to establish links to the community even with Tech being at a different site.
First of all, thanks to everybody for us. I was here for most of the nights and I watched what you guys were doing. And I want to personally thank you all for all of the effort that you put in. One of the things that I noticed when we were doing this, and I hope it's just kind of because it's what we were doing and it's pieces we were working with. But I hope that everybody takes to heart that we're building an educational facility with athletic fields attached and not an athletic facility with an educational facility attached. And I hope that everybody puts as much excitement and effort and gets all excited about the science labs and the math classrooms and all of those things as they do about where the football field goes and whether or not it has turf. Just one observation. And another observation, and this is maybe more to the architects than it is to anybody else. And I know we're not really talking about architecture right now. But we're building the school for kids and we're building the schools for the students. And I'm wondering why, and even up in Alexandria, which is a brand-new, grand-spanking new facility, it's like the bus should always come through the back of the school. We let the kids in the back door. And then we have a grand entrance out front. And nobody uses it. I'm wondering why, why is, I mean, it seems to me like I would want the kids to come through the grand entrance. It's their school.
Thank you. Do you want me to answer?
Yeah.
Because I know the answer. That's a great question. Because, so the kids who are on buses come in that, and they both enter the same spot. They both enter the same spot. The students who are driving, the majority of students at Alexandria enter the front door along with the visitor drop-off, which has the administration there. The busing is tended to by adult supervision. So that's an adult-supervised thing. Buses cannot be combined with the parent pickup and drop-off mode and the student parking, or you get disaster. And actually, we talked about that tonight. And, but they end up in the same spot. And we actually proposed a similar thing. But there is no back door to Alex. Both sides are treated equally. And the administration is on one side. And they just, they chose to put their student parking at the front door, not the staff parking. So then the majority of kids come in the front door with parents and visitors. And the bus traffic comes through the north just for that separation and safety and security. So there was quite a discussion about it though, but...
Yeah. And I guess I understand that. I was thinking about the Apollo map that I was looking at. It looked like the kids are going down this hallway.
And, you know, right now, it's a backdoor place, right, back there? But in the future, we think, what we're trying to do is open it up to have equal sides and then equal access out to the field. So those are all challenges and issues that we look forward to solving in the future.
Thank you so much. I was going to encourage you all, the workshop meeting, I don't know, have we decided where it's going to be? Will it be at the usual site? And I would encourage you folks to come and watch us have this discussion. It really, as I've said before, energizes us to have real people when we're doing our diligence. And, you know, on breaks, we can talk to you all before or after. So it looks like we are done. If so, the meeting is adjourned and thank you very much for your support.